Everyone would please rise for the pledge and remain standing for the prayer. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dear heaven father, thank you so much for the blessing of this evening. Even with the clouds swirling around us, we just, we thank you that we have this roof over our heads and we think for every roof that's over every head in this community right now, this evening. We pray for your hedge of protection, not only upon our citizens and our emergency workers, but we also pray for a special hedge of protection upon those who may be trying to escape the heat these next few days. We just pray, pray that they find areas where they can find relief, pray for your safety upon them, pray that you work in the hearts of our neighbors to help them be loving neighbors and to reach out whenever they can and to be mindful of those living around them. We thank you for your blessings of wisdom and guidance in this meeting tonight. We thank you for your presence here and we just, we have various things to go over and we thank you for that. There are opportunities, whether they be obstacles to overcome or things to, to talk about to further along in our community, we thank you for these opportunities. We thank you for each and everything that you bless us with and let us never be a community that loses sight of all the things that, that we have. We thank you for all these things and in Jesus name we pray. Amen. All right, Cindy, if you would, roll call.
Brandon Elmore.
President.
Bob Leahy.
Here.
Jason Brewer.
Here.
Tim Heiss.
Here.
All right, trust you've had an opportunity to review the consent agenda. No questions or comments, I would entertain a motion for approval.
I'm moved that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
We have first and we have second.
All second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Consent agenda approved as presented. So we will go ahead and we have a special presenter this evening, our chief police, Mr. Kobe Wells and Mr. Jamie Wright, our ordinance enforcement office.
Brains.
What's that?
Brains.
He's the, okay. Is that why I'm to call you, Brains?
If you really want to.
I will turn, I will turn the floor over.
Okay, what we're here for tonight is to introduce you guys to a new program and give you access to this program and a read-only, you can't make any changes or anything on it. But for the most part, what this is, is a workflow program for Jamie and our ordinances. As we know, ordinances are quite a huge deal in the city and James, I mean, just ongoing, ongoing and we want to be able to let you guys see things live as we go. That way, if you have any constituents that make them up and say, hey, such and such address, you'll have access to this and you can see if in fact you, it's on there already or if you did bring something to our attention, it would be placed on here and then you can see the follow-up without all the extra and stuff like that and that way you can talk to your constituents. And it's a really, really good tool for Jamie. As I said, it's, it's all live as you go. We just spent the last 45 days right here. Jamie's a little bit more familiar with the program as far as actually working through it and doing cases and stuff like that than I am because he's the hands-on guy, but I did attend the training and stuff. So I did give Brandon the login information.
Yeah, I send each of you guys a text message with the link to the login screen and then you'll have a screenshot with username and password to use on the site once you get to it.
So I've never really tried this on my phone, but I'm sure it'll work. It's a web-based program and you just simply.
It works fine.
Okay, so Steve's logged in on his phone, in fact, I think Steve loves that the most. But anyways, as we go along here, I'm just simply just going to show you what it is. I'm not going to spend a lot, I'm not going to eat up a lot of your time. I know there's some business that City needs to attend to and really, as much as there is to this program, it's really simplistic and that's what we wanted it to be. So on this first page here is your dashboard and again, you guys won't be able to make any changes or anything like that, but feel free to email us if there's something you see on there you want to discuss or, you know, something that brought to our attention. We just started using it, so you see what, 14 cases, right Jamie, all together? And Jamie's continuing to add to that daily. We do plan on having some of our cases that we're going to go back and add to this, but during our training, it got to a point where we was going to go live and she dumped everything out. So, but we knew that was coming, so we didn't put any of the, you know, the really good ones in here. Go ahead. I'm just going to let him click through and then I'll start talking as he goes through. So what's really nice is if you guys want me to, in my monthly reports, I can start adding charts and graphs and give you all this good information and as we go along, of course, the numbers will start climbing and you'll see what we've kind of been saying all along, how quickly cases are closed and how, how on top of things Jamie is and the follow-ups and stuff like that. So these are just various bar graphs, circle graphs, all kinds of different information if you're into that kind of stuff that you'll have access to. And again, it's all, it's read-only. And just some more bar graphs and stuff like that, really easy to see the, what are you doing? Really easy to see the breakdowns and stuff like that and it's breaking it down by month. Is there anything specific you guys want to see, make sure you ask questions? I said it's pretty self-explanatory when you're looking at it. Go ahead and go with one of the cases. When you click on the cases button and you'll, you can see that he's starting to add cases into the system and again, I apologize to anybody that their addresses aren't there, but again, it is what it is at this point. You'll see a case number is attached to all of them over here, where it's at and then which officer did it. The mayor can add stuff, Steve can add stuff, I think. I can't remember if you guys agree only or not. But over here, it tells you if something's still open and what kind of notice they're at. Some of you guys know that in our ordinances, there's more than one notice that is given. Sometimes there's not and as you go through the various ordinances, you'll see some of the ordinances, I can just go up and write you a ticket. Some of the ordinances I have, like grass, by state statute, I have to give you seven days. Okay, so if somebody comes in and says, my neighbor's grass is really tall and Jamie goes down, you can follow up seven days later and see if he was cited or if he got the grass moved. So this will just be a continuous list, so when somebody calls and asks, hey Bob, where about 1208 West Taylor? You can go in there and Jamie, you want to click on 1208 maybe? So this is just the various activities that Jamie's done at this location. And again, you'll notice what you did, you want to walk me through this part of it, Jamie?
Yeah, so at the top here, it says case created on June 1st, 2022, so that, whoops, sorry. The first, I can get it back up here. Your computer might be. All right. It will tell you, get it up real quick. It'll tell you that I did post a notice on the, on the property and then it also has a follow-up inspection date. This one just happened to be for grass, so it was seven days. When I do do the inspection, so for this property here, after seven days, it had not been moved. So therefore, we have a guy that does mow properties that we send out and I make the list. This yard was mowed by the city, so I went ahead and I closed it. Now that, that property is on our mow list until either the owner or someone else comes to us and says, hey, we're mowing that property, so.
The other thing is you'll see the violations, it spells them out, all that kind of good stuff.
Yeah.
And also on the ones that do have to have a notification, it sends him, hey, it's time to look at this property.
Yeah, it'll send me an email saying that, hey, I do have a follow-up for whatever address that is that day. And there's numerous ones of them that do pop up, so it's more than one a day. As well, with this too, I can also take photos and then I can attach them. So then that way, you can view them and see the condition of what the yard is or if it's condemnation, you can see the pictures that I've taken of the property and, you know, how dilapidated the property is.
Has that been mowed since then?
Yes, it has been.
Okay. And, okay, and that's right, you said it's on the city list now, so.
Yeah.
And just for clarification sake, for the general audience that's watching, there's a charge that's attached there. We bill, we have an hourly rate.
Yes.
Correct? It's still $100 per hour?
Yes. Sure is.
And that's.
And in fact, that's such a good ordinance that we have that the first, last year when Jamie first come in, we started out with 35 properties at the beginning of summer. By the end of summer, because we were actually sending them bills, we was down to 10.
I think right now, I think right now we might have 13, but we just started the mow season, so that will start to dwindle again, once people get them bills in the mail. Then also, I can also, it saves the violation and this is what our notices look like now. And it will have the homeowner's name and address. This ATN number is actually the GIS number, I will look up on GIS. This is the date, of course, the violation with notice and then down here, as you can see, it shows the municipal code and then also, it's the ordinance code as well. So then that way, they're not only just getting something on their door saying, hey, your grass is tall, get it mowed, it's actually a copy of our ordinance that we have on AM Legal as well. And then it tells you what the resolution would be and then it's how to comply by date. And then down to bottom, it will tell you.
This is what he's showing you now is actually what we'd get, if he made contact with, let's say it was Bob, this is what he would hand you. If no contact was able to be made at the time, this would be taped on the door, put up on the door for notification. And with other violations, there, he may send out via mail, certified mail, and these are the types of things that go with them. So also in this system, he's able to print citations for our city court. So everything's done directly from this and he can print that off in his truck. We've got him a printer that hooks up to his computer and he simply just goes in there and gets print. All this stuff happens right there on the spot. He doesn't have to come back to the PD and do paperwork, unless it's really hot and he just wants to get some air.
Next couple days. Then also, it does have the attachments again, that remember the photos that I just showed you. Then I can also, before, I used Spillman, what the police and fire use to put in their reports for accidents or any calls that they get generated. Now I can just go into case notes and that's where I put my report at. So like this one has two of them on it that has pretty much stating, while I was on patrol as ordinance officer, I observed said address in violation of whatever ordinance code that they are in violation of. And then I go through and say, you know, I tried to make a contact with the owner. If no owner comes to the door, I didn't make contact with anyone that, I did leave notice on door. I'll do a follow-up in seven days or whatever the follow-up lead time is. After the seven days, I did go back in and said, the yard had not been mowed, it had not complied and I will. That's how I had the case.
Anyways, it's a really good workflow program.
Still working on the case.
And we get to involve you guys, like I said, if you have constituents which have complaints about ordinances and stuff like that, this is a spot that you can go to and see exactly everything Jamie's doing and he's on this daily. Can you find the maps?
Is this like reportable out to like a spreadsheet where, you know, you can capture, you know, like condemnations, like a list that could be looked at easily?
There, there are some reports and she's working on that for us in a spreadsheet type. I don't believe that she's got to that point yet.
But it's got the capability of it, it sounds like.
Cases.
Because I think that's something that we've kind of struggled with in the past is just, okay, what's on the condemnation list? What is it currently, what's the current status of it? And somebody knows, but not everybody.
So when you guys log in and you go to cases up here, you'll come down, you'll see all this stuff and you can click on this and you'll see the case. One of the really neat features of this is when he clicked on the map, you already went there.
Yeah, I'll go back real quick. So.
Cases.
Cases.
If you click on this button right here, this is actual GIS information. And you'll see that number 14 right there. As you start to zoom in, that will start spreading out to the various points and locations of each one of those. So once you click on one of the, the flags that drops there, you look over here and it tells you what that violation was at that address or at that spot. So it gives you kind of a general idea. And really, as far as you guys are concerned, without going too in-depth and everything, that's what you're going to see. You can click on anything you want up there, you're not going to change anything, you have read-only rights, so you can go home and play with it all you want. And if there's stuff that you want to, there's the little flag, so if he was to click on that, it would show this stuff over here. But.
They'll highlight the box too as well. You can also click on.
It has the report number up there. So you can clearly see the report. The whole case.
And then you can, you can view through as well.
So any questions or concerns you guys might have for this or?
This should help tremendously.
I think so.
It's like a really good tool for you guys, I mean, it does.
Yeah, it's a really good tool for us and in the past, I kind of wanted to bridge a gap between council, board works and what we do at the police department without, you know, 500 text, emails, hey, what'd you do here? Well, now you get a chance to log in and see it and then if there's something that you have a question about, you can absolutely send that email or text or something.
Very nice. Thank you guys.
Yep.
Great job. Well, Ken, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you now. So, hey, do you want to go ahead and?
Just a second.
Okay. Well, for everybody in the audience, this is Kent Anderson, go ahead. This is Kent Anderson with, from that's handled our light grant.
Yeah. Tonight, we can tentatively award it, but then I'd like for the council to give Chad the authority to award it, sign the contract, when I did release the funds from OAKR.
Okay.
Okay. That way we don't, he didn't have to concern another meeting. It's pretty typical what we do now.
All right.
Okay. I thought Monty was going to be here tonight, so I only have one copy of this. This is the bid recommendation letter for the light clearance project that we've now bid out three times. So Bruce Carter and Associates is recommending Dore and Associates out of Bay City, Michigan to do the project. We opened bids back, what, a week ago?
For the third time, yes.
Yeah, for the third time. Dore's bid was $350,700. Advanced Demolition Services was $461,482. Third one, I don't even know why they even bid it because they didn't have enough information in their bid to even consider it, so it was considered non-responsive. Their bid was $1,381,766, so.
Yeah. Let's just slap a figure down.
They'd never bid on a project with Dore because 496 was not even in there. I mean, that's the mother of all forms. So like I say, Bruce Carter and Associates is recommending Dore and Associates to do the project.
Can you spell them?
I'll leave this letter here and if any of you want copies, somebody.
I can get copies and have them pass them out.
Make a copy. Before we totally award it to them and sign the contract, we are going to sit down and have a meeting with them to be sure that they understand what we want. They were really low on the new construction part of it. We have to build a retaining wall and the exterior wall, rebuild it over here. And their bid was extremely low on the new construction work. So I think we need to sit down with them and have a clear understanding of what we expect to be done. And if we're satisfied, then we can go with them. But the way, I don't know if you heard me talking to Steve or not, but the way we've been doing these is, OAKR won't let us award a project until I have release of funds. And I'm guessing we'll probably have release of funds in the next day or two, because we went that route before. And the successful contractor said, whoops, wait, I made a mistake, pulled my bid, so bid the third time. But what I would like for you to do tonight is tentatively award this to Dore and Associates and then give Chad the authority to award it and sign a contract once I get release of funds. That way, we don't have to wait for another council meeting or have a special meeting. It seems to have worked out really well. We've probably been doing that about a year, so that's what I think we need to do here because we want to get this going here. We spent three bids here, timed three bids. We got to get going.
Should have been done already, actually.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Question?
Yeah.
Is Dore the one, the bidder that has like gone low and may, in your judgment, may not understand fully what we mean?
No, they're not the one. Okay.
I don't think. There's always a question with Dore, but right now, we really don't have a lot of choice. I mean, Advanced, the second little bidder, had left some things out of their bid too. All of them did basically, but some of them are informalities that in the bid advertisement could be waived. He didn't check that he had the last addendum that went out. Back on another piece of paper, he had received addendum, whatever number on this date. So it was in there, but not in the right place. So those are informalities that we're allowed to waive. He didn't check two, three boxes on whether he was going to crush the brick or what he's going to do with the floor tile. So that's why we're going to sit down and have a meeting to gather that information and be sure he knows what we want.
Do you think he'll raise the price at all?
That's left up to all of us by change orders, so. No, I asked Joel Markland at BCA about that, the last project they had with them and they didn't have any big outstanding change orders. With that said, probably not the best contractor I could have picked, but that's why, another reason why we want to sit down with them and. It was also suggested, BCA is going to do part-time inspection on this project and with Dore, I had talked to Monty about it, and I think we need to bump that up to full-time inspection. So they're here every day that Dore's here, so.
How much increase cost has that added to our?
Not a lot, I don't think, because I think they had quite a bit to start with, but that'd be a question for, for them. I can find out and let you know.
Well, I just say, we had no work, half a million is what our grant is for.
Yeah.
So I mean, that's obviously our magic marker that we want to stay within, so.
Yeah, I don't think it'll be a whole lot, from what I've talked with them. Jacob, the engineer, he's on summer two-week camp with the military, so John Kilmer has been handling this and we just feel like that's probably our best option is to bump that up to full-time.
Okay.
That way, there is no question they'll be here all the time.
Eyes on sight.
Yeah. If you were, if you find that there's, that they haven't adequately assessed the retaining wall, the new construction or the rebuild of the wall, you, I mean, you're thinking in the tens of thousands of dollars, you know, because you're, you know, they're, they're $100, $111,000 under the next bidder at this point, so really, there's a pretty significant difference.
I'm thinking they were at $250,000. Don't hold me to this because I was trying to go from memory. I think they were at 150 or 250 on new construction. And the other contractor was at, it was over $300,000 on new construction. But that's what, another reason why we want to sit down with them, because I think we may have some extra money here. We may want to look at the new construction and maybe make some changes to it to make it look a lot nicer. Like the retaining wall, use some nice block or something or just things like that.
Yeah, as long as we have visibility to what's being suggested in terms of suggested changes.
Any, yeah. Most of it's going to be exposed, so I want it to look nice.
Yes, yeah, and so do we.
I know.
Not only look nice, but the.
That's my priority with the new construction is making it look nice and that's why I want to know they're not going to come in and just pour a concrete retaining wall and that's it, so.
Right. Well, the endurance of it's critical too, because we've been through this as a community unfortunately on the corner up, across the street from where one of the dinners is going to be taking place, where it was not backfilled adequately and we dealt with sinking for years.
You will. Best be compacted and.
Yeah.
The good thing is they didn't, I don't think they found a lot up at the gas station site, so I don't think we're going to do anything with that.
Okay.
So we're going to have some money left over here. So I think we'll have enough to do the nice-looking wall.
Excellent.
Exposed wall and the retaining wall and then to bump up their inspection.
Cool. Wonderful.
Because we have $500,000 and us and them, I can't remember if they're out of local or grant. I think they might be out of grant. I'll have to look. I think we're procured down here. I'm just thinking myself, so.
And we've dealt with BCA, Tim, that way for.
Yeah.
It seems like forever.
Yeah. What we did, the old plant down here, the body company plant or the? Where was that?
On Pearl, Pearl Street or where you reference?
Pearl, I think, yeah, yeah, yeah. And it had construction on it too, because there was a business in one side of it.
Yeah, that's the body company plant, yeah.
Yeah, and we had to build a wall to separate that.
Not turn over it.
And it's fine. Just working with that here just this week or last week a little bit, so that's.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what's going on there, so.
So that's where we're staying.
So any questions?
So we basically need to give a motion to give you signing authority.
Well, that chooses the little bidder based on the recommendation from BCA, which is our third party.
Tentatively award to Dore. If you wanna go ahead and do that.
Okay, I'll make the motion. We tentatively award, award the bid to Dore and Associates at three hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred dollars.
Pending.
Pending.
Pre-construction meeting.
Yeah, pending pre-construction meeting.
And release of funds.
And release of funds, yeah.
Do we have a first and we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second. Cindy, if you would, roll call vote.
Who was the second? I'm sorry.
Tito.
Tito.
Brandon Elmore?
Yes.
Bob Wayhey? Jason Brewer?
Yes.
Tim Heiss?
Yes.
Tito Ferrars?
Yes.
Now then, I would like for you to vote to give the mayor the authority to award the project and sign the contract, the construction contract to Dore, once we get release of funds.
Once again, pending, pending the pre-construction meeting and the.
What is he, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, showing my ignorance here. Oh, what is release of funds?
We have to go through a process with the funding agency to get the funds released to where we can start drawing it down.
Which is the five hundred thousand, but they, they release that in full when they release it?
No, no, it stays there. We draw it monthly from pay requests and.
Okay. So it's a draw as needed, then?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll move. Let's see. Give the mayor authority to, to.
Award the contract.
Award the contract to Dore and Associates. So it's pending the.
Pre-construction.
Pre-construction approval and release of funds.
Do we have a first and we have a second?
I'll second.
And sign the contract.
And sign, and, you know, that goes to signing authority, which is where I started in the first place.
Again, pending all that, that's already been.
The signing comes last.
Cindy, if you would.
Brandon Elmore?
Yes.
Bob Wayhey?
Yes.
Jason Brewer?
Yes.
Tim Heiss?
Yes.
Tito Ferrars?
Yes.
Now, I will say one other thing. When you apply for this grant, you put up so much local match, and we get five hundred thousand in grant. Those are figured from Okra on percentages. Ninety, ten, eighty, twenty, eighty-five, fifteen, whatever it is. When we start, that's from the grant application. That has to hold true throughout the whole project. When we come down to the end of the project, if it's not ninety, ten, eighty, twenty, whatever, we will have to pay money back to Okra. And it's not like it wasn't spent on the project, but sometimes it's really hard to keep those percentages exact. Because a lot of times, at the end of a project, they'll do a final quantities of everything that was spent on the project. And it could be a negative deduct, which would just kill us. So I need to keep close track of that throughout this, because when bids come in under is when that comes into effect. If they're coming in over, very seldom does do the percentages change. So it will be based off of what they bid here. So we know right off the bat, we can't spend five hundred thousand dollars. So I do wanna throw that out, because sometimes it does happen, and you do have to write a check back to Okra. Some cities and towns get upset, but it's just one of those things that it's hard to keep it at that. So, but I did wanna throw that out there, but I'll keep a close eye on it.
But by that, do, if we're, so if it's, but we hold that percentage. So if it's, so let's say the final tally is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We'll still be paying that percentage of the four hundred and fifty thousand.
I have my secretary figure it and see what, not sure how that, but.
Well, we should never pay more than not the percentage matches.
Right, we try not to, but sometimes it gets through. I mean, but we'll keep a close eye on it.
Yeah.
I don't like, I don't like to come in saying, write this check to Okra.
So when, when it's time for payment, instead of asking for the, you know, a hundred percent of whatever cost from a released fund, why don't we just do that percentage as it, what is it, twenty-five?
It was ninety, ten, yeah.
Because it wasn't ninety, ten, wasn't it?
I don't remember.
I think it was a.
For some reason, I thought it was a ninety, ten match.
I think it is, I think, because I thought it was, I guess, pretty close in the match on that.
So that ninety, ten would apply to that three hundred and fifty thousand, not the five hundred.
Right, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah, we're gonna have.
But we should pay no more than the fifty thousand of, that we would be expecting, the ten percent of the five hundred thousand, right?
But we are allowed up to twenty percent in change orders, so. But my secretary at the office, she keeps pretty close tabs on the percentages, so.
I mean, I wouldn't want us to be like, having to come up with expenses to spend our percentage. Let's just spend, you know, draw down whatever we have to for the, keep, to keep the exact percentages on every expense.
We will have a change order too, it's just common. I mean, it's hard to catch everything.
Yeah, we're familiar with change orders from the wastewater treatment. In fact, that's part of today's agenda, so.
But our, but, but that situation's a little different too, in the fact that with our grant with that, the, our, our, our contribution amount is fixed.
Yeah, correct. So we were actually trying to utilize everything left.
So when we came in low, that gave us room for, for change orders up, and so the two, because anything we don't spend, we, we give back to USDA.
Now it's USDA, and they don't have this percentage.
Right, yeah, so that's, that's the, like I say, with that, we, our, our amount's fixed no matter what. So the most we get out of, the better, the more we can get out of it, the better. Because that's just that less money we have to take out of rate.
I just tried to get everything out there that, you know, that I ran into and I had the city of Seoul, and they had to write a check one time for thirty thousand dollars back to Okra. The engineer did a high-dollar deduct change order at the very end and.
But at the same time, you really, you, you wrote a check, but it really wasn't like you were.
No, it was still spent on the project.
Yeah. You're not paying, you just put your back to what the percentage was reversing.
All right, anything else?
Nope, that's all I got.
All right, thank you very much. I know you're gonna get to Dunker.
Yep, I do. Anybody have any questions for the?
Thank you.
I guess I'll get with you on this meeting with Dore.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you very much, you're a big.
Safe travels.
Okay, thank you.
All right, now we'll actually get back to the agenda. Terms of updates, department reports. Got a few kudos to extend. The horse show that was in the park Memorial Day weekend was outstanding at a hundred and seventy-two entries. And in fact, there's, there are more shows on the docket now, are there not?
Yes, there's, this young lady come up and talked to us. They do a blazing barrels, is what she calls it. And it's a kid-friendly show, it's not really Ibra. But she has three or four shows that she wants to put on there with addition to two Ibra shows. So a possibility of six shows before the end of this year, before twenty bits. Including the radio, or rodeo.
Yeah, in fact, the, the head of this previous show that occurred Memorial Day weekend, she did a post to all of her, to all the racers or entries and so forth, and all the other people that follow. And it was glowing about the park and coming into the community and just, it was really nice, so. Great job there. Also, kudos to Steve and Kobe and Tito. You know, both are chiefs and Tito are councilmen for the resource event that occurred on Saturday afternoon from three o'clock to six o'clock. Tremendous, what I thought from my perspective, was a tremendous involvement from folks and, and just it was, it was timed well-stimmed, I felt. Grand opening of the Family Dollar Dollar Tree, that is coming up. It's obviously already open, but they're going to actually celebrate with a grand opening event down here on the corner. If you've not had an opportunity to go in there yet, it's, it's worth a visit, so it's unique, it's cool. Both stores are represented down the middle of the store. One side's representative Dollar Tree, the other side's Family Dollar, so it's really cool. So we're very thankful to have them into the community and wanna welcome, obviously, Family Dollar's been here, but Dollar Tree's new to us. We've received official approval from Indiana Economic Development Corporation of the, for Vision Corner. And the four hundred thousand dollars of the reg, regions-ready allocation is now officially obligated to Vision Corner. So that's all official, so that's a huge win. Received a very nice email last week, and, and so that's, that's a big plus. We're the very first project of the hundred and forty-two submitted that was funded. And that's not even, that's not, I'm saying anywhere near that the hundred and forty-two are getting funded. There's just a handful that get funded, and we were the first of a handful among eight counties, if you will. So, and lastly, the flag raising, our first, first official flag raising for the Union City flag. As you see here, that's going up July first at five, well, five-thirty is the ceremony. And at five-forty-three is what I've slated for the official flag raising. It's five, four, three, two, to one. It's meant to be a countdown. So five-forty-three, we will hoist the flag for the first time ever in Union City. It will be attended by both, both mayors, myself and Mayor Pooter. And we will have industry heads and schools represented and both sides aligned for emergency services, so. Special day, everybody is welcome at five-thirty at Broadway. A lot of people probably don't want to know, we have a Broadway in Union City. But Broadway is actually what people would know as the form of Bank, Union Bank, or Union Trust Bank parking lot. So the parking lot across from State Farm, that's Broadway, actually. So that's where we will have the ceremony. We will have Pearl Street in that section blocked off, and it will be just a twenty-five-minute ceremony. I have no idea what mood Mother Nature will be in that evening, so. It's known around here, it's either gonna be a hundred and five or sixty-five, so just be ready. But we will look forward to that.
You said two times, is it at five, or is it?
Five-thirty, sorry. Five-thirty. And the flag raising is at five-forty-three.
Got it.
So the ceremony starts at five-thirty, flag raising at five-forty-three, it's just a twenty-five-minute ceremony. So it will be done for, for everybody to be able to go grab a, grab a bite to eat. So that's July first, obviously a special weekend. Chief, I imagine you don't have anything else you wanna cover, do you, in terms of department report?
I don't.
All righty. Cindy, you don't have anything you need to go over with us, do you?
No.
All righty. Council members, Tito, let's start with you.
Yes, I just had one quick, well, one question and possibly a follow-up. I, I see that we spent over two hundred thousand dollars on the Isaac Gray development on North Plum Street last month. I went out there yesterday and saw what looks like manholes for sewage and water. Could, could we have a description of, you know, an update of what's actually been done so far?
The mainline waste and storm waters system has been put in, it's been installed. We're starting on the laterals into the cul-de-sacs in the, the side streets. The expenditure that is in the packet today for two hundred and one thousand and some change is primarily paying for all the parts and pieces that are located on the job site. It's, it's, that, that's basically to allow the contractor breathing room with his finances to, so he can start paying for all the equipment, all the pipe, all the manholes, all the, the framework, all the catch basins. So that, that's specifically what that's paying for. That was recommended to us by the engineering firm that managed the bid process. Said that it was usual and customary for us to do a pay claim to allow the contractor to pay for the, the parts that were on the job site.
Good question. So that's, so that's the two hundred that's, that we're gonna approve?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay, very good. Also, I don't know, just, just looking, just looking around out there, it seems like several parts of the area are like low-lying. And it could be susceptible to flooding, and I did see a lot of water, like a lot of water. Of course, it's been raining, but still. Are we doing, is there, is there something we have to do to reduce the potential flooding in the new?
It's all, it's all been addressed, there's a dried detention pond that's dug. They've already, in, in the low-lying areas while they're working, they've already released water to that dried detention pond once. Once everything is completed, obviously, the storm sewer will, will manage a large percentage of that. But any large amount of rain will be stored in the dried detention pond and then released to the big ditch that would be on the north side of that development and lead directly to the creek.
Thanks very much, that's all.
Tim?
I don't have anything.
Jason?
The only thing I have regarding the Backs Day lofts, there on the southeast corner, there's some graffiti on that wall.
Yes.
I don't know if that could be addressed and cleaned off?
Well, that's gonna be part of discussion, that can be part of discussion we have, I'm down here in new business, so that's a great question. Because actually, that's something I've noticed a number of times too. Anything else?
Nope, thank you.
And welcome aboard, I know the first name was Low and Orthodox, because it wasn't here, so.
Thank you.
So welcome again.
Thanks.
Bob?
I just had a question about spraying the weeds at the park.
Yes.
Is that on the agenda for the near future, hopefully?
I know it's already been started, because I've seen around the trees roll sprayed, so is there an area specifically?
Just the, the grass.
Oh, oh, like a, like a lawn treatment?
Right.
Okay, gotcha.
Because we do have a spray.
I will confirm that, Bob. I know that before Dennis left, that was a topic of conversation. I believe that it's done, but I will have to confirm, so. We do, we do spray for broadleaf, and I, I believe it's finished, but I'll, I'll confirm that and I'll let you know.
I'd like to know what we spray, like what we spray on.
I.
Because like I run out there and I wanna know if I'm gonna be contaminated or not.
Well, I will find that out, because I can't even answer that question. I'm sure it comes from both farm, farm service, but I'm not even sure what we spray. I'll have to find out.
Anything else, Bob? That's it? Brandon?
I had a couple concerned citizens talk to me about the gas company and the work that they're doing around town. Actually, there was a clarification that needed to be made too with, with one of the individuals, because they assumed it was the city doing the work. And I said, no, it's not the city, it's actually the gas company. But it basically holes in the yard, not being addressed, not, you know, covered, you know, in between work times that, you know, that they were, they were coming back for the day, you know, previous days or what have you. One actually has been addressed and it's, it's, it's been covered since, but one individual on Pearl Street, her property has not been remedied, and I've actually called a couple times myself, and nobody's been out. So I'm not sure if there's something we can do from the city to.
You called the gas company?
Yes.
Who'd you speak with?
Uh, I don't know the name of the individual.
If you can funnel all that stuff through me, we have direct contact with their onsite foremans. Ohio Valley Gas is doing some of the work, Greater Heights Corporation's doing some of the work. And, and we are unbelievably frustrated with this process as well, but unfortunately, it's what we're going to deal with for the next year and a half, because it's going to take that much more time till they're done.
Yeah, yeah, I've got a picture that, that this one individual sent me. I mean, somebody could fall in it, I mean, kind of thing, you know, turn an ankle or, you know.
Well, just, just get me that address and I'll, I'll have a face-to-face conversation with their, their site foremans tomorrow.
Okay, very good, thank you, thank you. And on a, on a lighter note, swim team season is in full swing. We were actually supposed to have a home meet this evening, but the weather didn't cooperate. We were, we were gonna have over, I think, a hundred swimmers in town, a team from Fort Recovery and a team from Winchester. But we weren't able to have that again because of the weather. But again, just a lighter note, that's what's kinda going on in town, so.
Cool, that's awesome.
I did have one more point. I, I, I'd forgotten, I'm sorry. So before the pool opened, I don't know if it's still happening, but I noticed a couple times that there were families. times that there were families, small groups of kids playing in the creek there, Little Missinawa River there. And I'm wondering, is it safe? Have we had, can we get access to like some kind of evaluation of the water, is it contaminated, et cetera?
It has a liner in the bottom of it, it has a clean bill of health.
Are you talking about the creek or the pool?
The creek.
The creek.
But I wouldn't, I wouldn't play in it. Just because it's literally dirty river water, so, but it does have a clean bill of health from my dam and it does have a liner in the bottom that has not been disturbed. That's why it's so problematic to dredge the middle and do maintenance work in it because it does have a liner in it. It's basically a barrier between the soil and the water, so I would encourage people not to play in it, but you know, it's just river water, so it's, it's as safe as that is.
And it's, and it's subject to possible contamination from farm fields and other runoff. It's not really a, the original hazard's probably not really a problem, but the other runoff could be an issue. Plus, one thing, I was there at the bridge at one point for a little bit and there was a group of children and a woman looked like a grandmother with children, some small children and that water's pretty deep in a couple of spots there and really it's a bit hazardous, not just for contamination, but just for depth, because you can, that one area is still water and it's pretty deep.
Yeah. Well, I don't know, we don't have any signage out there as far as I know.
There is signage that says.
Not fishing.
Not fishing, yeah, but it also, I think.
But we don't have anything regarding playing, do we?
Well, I, I mean, I don't care to put signs up there, that's fine, but I don't know that you're gonna stop curious kids from playing in a creek. I mean, it's what I did when I was a kid, that's just what they do.
Because I was looking online at a report from Environmental Protection Agency in Indiana on that and I don't remember which one it was, but it looked like every river and creek has either E. coli from runoff from confined animal feeding operations or PCBs, right, plastics from industrial, industrial, so I mean, I kind of wish we could like know what is, if there is an issue and just like maybe if necessary warn people about it, just.
I mean, you want to do research and see if there's, I mean, because I mean, again, we're kind of, we're kind of at the mercy of what everybody else in the state of Indiana is, you know, by what you just described, I mean, it's creeks and rivers throughout the entire state, so.
Furthermore, I mean, that, there's, we can post signs in the park because that's a public space, but it's not going to prevent them from playing in the creek on the west side of Frank Miller Road or at 28, it's all the same bridge or, you know, three miles out into Jackson Township, it's not really manageable start to finish, so putting signs that are cautionary in nature, I think that's probably appropriate, because there's no lifeguard, there's nobody paying attention, but I, I don't know how we.
Maybe a message on the, on the back of the water bill too, possibly, just.
That'd be good. Something like that. We can do that, as a reminder. Alright. Anything else? Alright. Noble business, but new business, we have, speaking of which, wastewater project claim number 26 and claim number 27. You should have those in your packet. And I don't know if, boy works, anybody or Steve, if anybody wants to speak.
This is basically change order number 10. Three of the pieces of equipment have arrived and the remainder of the product from change order 10 is not, so this is just a partial claim to pay for the three pieces of equipment or three items that have arrived on change order 10.
Any questions or comments? Not, I would entertain a motion for approval of the first claim, first two claim change orders. So 26 is this full pager, right?
It should be for a push camera, a laboratory, VIS spectrometer and a pump. It's the three pieces of equipment that we have received. I'm not looking at it specifically, so if you give me a minute, I'll see if I can look at it. And again, we're currently using all the equipment, so.
Yeah, so if you look for, like the contractor's page, your claim order is in your top right hand and so it's all the pages, it's the two pages following it, or actually, yeah, actually four, like Tito said, four pages following it and then claim order number 27 is the next one for the 3610.
And again, just none of this is coming out of, our checkbook is coming out of the contingency funds.
Further questions or comments, or once you've had a chance to review, then I will entertain a motion.
On what contingency funds is that?
The wastewater treatment facility. The, the change order 10 was already approved. All we're doing is literally writing the checks for three pieces of equipment that was part of change order 10.
So it's approved already, right?
Technically, it's approved already. Jan, just wanted to make sure you guys were aware that these three claims were part of change order 10, we're paying them ahead of the biggest portion of change order 10 simply because we're already using the equipment.
There's no other questions, I'll move, except for project, wastewater project claim number 26 and 27.
We have a first or a second?
I'll second.
Jan, or sorry, Cindy, if you would, we'll call them.
Brandon Elmore?
Yes.
Bob Lehey?
Yes.
Jason Brewer?
Yes.
Tim Heis?
Yes.
Tito Ferrars?
Yes.
Now for the ceremony, which is change order number one and change order number two. You should have those in front of you and again, they're labeled the top right-hand corners.
Okey-dokey. This is a little confusing, so in the bid or in the, I guess it'd be the bid, Miller Pipeline came in, I guess the right way to say this would be under budget for the work they did on Division 2, on the sewer line rehabs. So change order one here is a decrease of the amount committed to Miller Pipeline of So that is what change order one consists of.
Any questions? If not, I've entertained a motion for approval.
I'll move, we approve order, change orders number one for Division 2 wastewater project.
You have a first, do you have a second?
I'll second.
First and second. Cindy, if you would, we'll call them.
Brandon Elmore?
Yes.
Bob Lehey?
Yes.
Jason Brewer?
Yes.
Tim Heis?
Yes.
Tito Ferrars?
Yes.
Now, I apologize, I guess the way Jane had to set up on the agenda has actually had them under the same box, but I guess for just clarity's sake, we would entertain a motion for change order number two.
So change order two is for work that is being done out of Division 2 for that $156,702.15 that we just got back, we're spending $126,631.25. And Jan and Mark have included a list of what they're doing with this. Basically, it's more work improving our stormwater and sanitary sewer systems, so it's basically manhole work, things like that, that's going to be keeping the stormwater out of our sanitary sewer. And again, we just put the $156,702, we're going to spend with change order two, the $126,631.25 out of that and so it's all contingency money, it's just actually spending down the money that's left over from the grant.
Any questions? Give a work scope and pricing on that last page. If not, I would entertain a motion for change order number two. In two.
I'll move, we accept wastewater project Division 2 change order number two, as presented.
You have a first or a second?
I'll second.
Jan, or Cindy, sorry, would you please do, we'll call them.
Who was the second?
Jason.
Jason.
Sorry, I don't know your voice.
It's okay, I can't get your name right, so.
Brandon Elmore?
Yes.
Bob Lehey?
Yes.
Jason Brewer?
Yes.
Tim Heis?
Yes.
Tito Ferrars?
Yes.
Okay, real quick, Mark Sullivan is going to be sending me, hopefully by the end of the week, an update of exactly what the balance is. A large portion of one of the last change orders, and I think it's probably change order 10, is not going to be done till mid to late fall because of supply chain issues. So this grant is going to hang out there and remain open for a longer period of time than we had expected. All of the accounting is up to date and everything is balanced, but we don't know exactly where we're at and how much money is left. But he's strongly encouraging us to spend that balance probably within the next 30 days. So he's going to be sending us the balance and he's going to be scheduling time to meet with Rob. He would probably recommend and he believes that Rob would want to keep doing infrastructure work, new manhole frames and castings and things like that with the balances of money. He believes it's going to be somewhere in the $30,000 to $40,000 range is what's actually left in the contingency money, but probably at the next meeting, you're going to be dealing with another change order to gobble that up and put that thing to bed, but it won't actually be closed off our books because we're going to have work being done later on into the fall. That's all I got.
Alright, thank you, Steve. Now, the next item on the agenda is not something actually, obviously, that we can vote on tonight, but it's for your review and consideration, which is a boat ordinance. We do not have anything pertaining to boats in ordinances right now, imagine that, considering we live in the middle of farmland, but we actually have, unfortunately, on Columbia Street, we have a boat that's not in use, has not been in use since it looks like the days when Gilligan's Island was still airing new episodes and it's deplorable, unfortunately, and the neighbors around it shouldn't have to contend with it. Also, it's becoming just a center for nuisance or traction of nuisance because it's, it's just sitting there pretty much, you know, abandoned. Now, granted, it's not the property owner's boat, it's a relative's, however, we are charged with protecting our neighbors in our neighborhoods and looking out for their best interest and unfortunately, again, this is one of the situations where the site, the situation on this property is detracting from the neighbor's property values. In other words, again, I've said this before and I don't think I can say it enough, it's true, they're actually stealing now. They're stealing money from their neighbors, because when you pull down a property, an adjoining neighbors, when you pull down their property value, you're taking money out of their pocket if they were to go for an equity loan or if they were trying to sell their property. You're actually stealing from them. I can't say it enough, when you have an obligation to your neighbors, it's not just something that God has asked us to do, which really should stop right there. That should be enough in loving my neighbor and doing what's best for the person next to you. That should be enough, but unfortunately, our society's proved that's not enough, unfortunately. So if we need to come out from a dollars and cents standpoint, we will do that and state the fact that when you're not taking care of your property to the best of your ability, you are affecting your neighbors and we are a community. And since we're a community, we have an obligation to one another. So that's why this is in here for your review. Is there anything, and what we're trying to do is fine-tune or craft the final version of this so we can submit this before you for approval on subsequent council meetings. Is there anything in here that grabs your attention that should be omitted or tweaked or changed or anything that's not in here that you feel should be considered?
Yeah, Jan wanted to stress that this is not council ordinance format. It's just.
Yeah, so this is not submitted for your vote tonight, this is, again, just trying to glean input.
I would also suggest that it go as an addendum to the inoperable vehicle statute that we already have, instead of creating a whole.
Correct. Correct, yes.
So this is an example from some other town, I'm sorry?
We both spoke at the same exact time.
Yeah. Well, yeah, this actually is a thing from another.
Yeah, I borrowed it from another and I kind of pulled some stuff out of it that I knew didn't pertain to Union City and I knew there was probably still some stuff left in there that pertained to the other city and that's why I give it to you guys for review and suggestion on any changes that you want to make in there. Again, and this isn't the first boat case we've had, I don't know if you've seen them, I think it was behind the new coffee shop. For the longest time, there was a boat sitting back there and we had no course of action to get rid of them or force them to get rid of them, because we didn't have an ordinance and it was just finally, I think, we got rid of them. It was just old boat storage boats they never even used, but it is something that could become an issue even bigger.
So we're talking about, we have a vehicle ordinance, we're talking about a boat ordinance that would be an addendum to that. Is there any other sort of vehicle or ATV, UTV, you know, anything like that that you may need to figure out to include here?
The only suggestion that I would make is that trailers in general and one, and more specifically just an empty trailer like you would haul a car on or not necessarily have any sides to it, just the trailer itself, the frame with the wheels. Sometimes those are junk, but I don't know how you would describe that.
Yeah, the, and the one thing that I think is a consideration there is sometimes some of those trailers will be loaded full of debris and then just left and they'll sit there and, and you know, it becomes, granted, it becomes subjective to a certain extent on your part, but to.
Well, all ordinances are like the mayor said, I mean, every ordinance in the city of Union City, the big word to remember is nuisance. And you know, what, how does that apply? Well, it's all civil, so you know, we'll try to find an ordinance that fits the trailer in the city of Union City, but like I said, if there's something that's got a flat tire in the yard, it becomes a nuisance with gravel running up, it just looks like junk, we can address it as a nuisance, but to find something more specific is what we'd be looking for on the trailer. And that's where we went with the boat also, because we weren't able to get that specifically until now, so it's, it's just another added thing to our inoperable vehicle statutes.
Well, if there's no further questions, we'll move on to the next item, but if you think of anything between now and over the next two weeks, certainly raise it to our attention, so, because what our goal will be is to have something in voting format for you in the next meeting. Backs Day lofts. Is that out of fire and into the frying pan? Was that out of fire and into the frying pan? Um, the insert in your council, as you see here, Mr. Anderson asked for payment in full of the sidewalk cost, um, the, the remaining portion to be paid. However, that was contingent upon previous council decision to address some issues that were in dire need of being addressed. And I know we have at least one member in the audience right now who can confirm that that's not been the case. I suspect, I don't know if you guys are here regarding the backstay. Okay, okay. So, um, since it's pertinent to this discussion, usually we, we hold comments from the general audience until the end, but if you don't mind, I'm going to go ahead and since it's, again, pertinent to this issue at hand, I'm going to let you guys, let you stand, speak, state your name and, and your.
Mayor, Chris Neider. We're with that two-two-stick, North Lawn, and we have the fire station there, it was the old fire station. And they put in, of course, he's talking about the sidewalk in behind here, and actually we go out and measure it, they put it exactly on the property line, which was not really a problem for me, and I still have a problem with that. But they put the fence on our side running down. And I have pictures of all of it. But even at that, still, that's not my big problem with it. Problem is it's a nuisance. And we have, uh, the problem we have here is we, I believe it's a violation of our county health codes because they got, they left the doors standing open, they don't have the dumpsters back in where they belong. People are coming up to dump their stuff there during the night, and we got people going through them. Well, as they're going through these dumpsters, they're dumping stuff on the ground, it's all blowing in my yard, I'm sticking it up every day. And I don't think we should have to do that. Uh, on hot days over there, they have a lot of dirty diapers, garbage and that, and boy do we get to smell strong from it. And if they had the lids closed on these dumpsters, that would help, but the lids are wide open. As I said, they're clear out to street level. And if they'd brought and put the system into where the fence had been running lengthwise for their property, widened it, they could have put the dumpsters in, the trucks would have room to swing in from that end and go directly in. As it is, their trucks are trying to come in across that alley portion, and they can't turn into it, there's no room for it. So they put the gates open, they move open, and they come in and drive in from the side and then hit it from an angle to get the garbage out. So that makes it difficult for them, very difficult getting out of there. But, uh, we contend with people coming in here as well, and, uh, we have signs up. We put signs up, no trucks passing, put poles up, they come in and rip the signs out, took them. And, uh, we have people coming in parking in our back area back there, which was originally the basketball court. They'll come in and just park there, go over to the place, uh, next door. I don't call the police department, these gentlemen have enough to do. They need, they're, they need to be, uh, able to get to if somebody, if emergency, it's more dangerous, something more aggressive and more necessary than me over here with people parking on my lot. So I don't bother like a lot, talk to them, most people are very continual, say sorry, we didn't know and they'll move for the most part, so we've done pretty well with that considering. But I get upset when I have people driving through my yard. They're going to turn around, they will cut up on the grass, and we're trying to get that area to look good, but it's been kind of difficult. Uh, I did have a question though about, uh, they, on Oak Street, where they took the trees out and rid the church there and all the way around, uh, they're going to do anything with that area?
Yeah, the sidewalks are actually getting replaced there. The trees will come, the, the stumps will come out completely. We don't have timeframe on that yet, do we? Because we've received a bid.
It'll be fall.
Yeah, this fall, this fall is when you'll see that occur.
That's great. We got pictures of the area, uh, and the council would like to look at them. Well, it's a statement here, and, um, I think it's a violation of health code to have that open where people are coming in to dump their garbage out, going through it. I know it is in California. I worked with the department's out there, and I worked with, uh, court system for years, thirty years, and I know there's definitely a violation of the code there, but I don't know about our codes here in Indiana. So I put down here, complain as follows, violation of county health codes, encroaching on the house, uh, property, firehouse, uh, pipes, parcels, so and so, uh, creating public nuisance in our hot days, uh, smelt from that is unbearable. And, uh, it wouldn't blow these gardens, I said, across our yard. Now, it's not just me, it's my neighbor over here, Daryl. He complains over his dogs and me, and complains about it. I think he come in and, uh, but it's our two places that get it the most because we're both right addition to it. Well, I think that's about all I have, and I'll turn this over to the mayor and.
Thank you very much.
Let's go from there.
Glad we took that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Sorry if I sounded a little, sounded like I kind of yelled a little bit. A little short on breath gas, C O P D.
Oh, sorry. No, I appreciate this.
Okay, so a quick update. So I, Tim and I talked after the last council meeting. We, we decided to take a little bit of a right angled approach, um, because we were getting nowhere with Mr. Anderson and, and the, the Anderson group, um, reached out to Rumke. Uh, they do not own or hold the city contract, so they would be a third party vendor. Um, we, we do have it, um, a requirement in local ordinance that requires the, the trash pickup people to close the gates when they are done. But Rumke is not our contractor for the city. Mr. Anderson is aware of that. My last face-to-face conversation with him, he assured me that he would be changing his contractor, but that obviously has not done, been done yet. So I have spoke with Rumke. I spoke with our sales associate, um, and I informed him that it was not at all acceptable. I did not appreciate his drivers managing the corral the way that they have been, uh, and that we were probably going to start citing them. And I don't know if that conversation sparked a nerve, but tomorrow I believe they are placing smaller dumpsters into the corral. They will once again, because they have actually physically fixed and repaired the gate system on more than one occasion since they've been the, the, the garbage contractor. Uh, so they're going to fix that one more time so that it works. They'll be putting smaller dumpsters in there, which I think is, is bad, but according to them, they have talked to Mr. Anderson on multiple occasions. He has been noncompliant with them, he's not responded to them. Um, they, they have asked for a different type of containment system because it's not workable with the angle that the trucks have to get in and out to actually push the dumpsters back to the back wall of the fence. Um, and, and it's, it's just not a workable system. So their only workaround is to use smaller containers, which we all know, and if you've been paying attention, that's going to mean that they're going to fill up faster, it's going to be possibly more problematic, but Dusty Yanks, the, the representative from Rumke, has assured me that after tomorrow, once they get those dumpsters switched out, that the gates will be closed. So hopefully that takes care of some of it. For clarification, a fence is perfectly permissible by county, um, ordinance to be built on a property line.
This is over.
Well, I, I'm not going to get into that conversation, but a, a fence is permitted to be built on a property line, so you would need to take that up with Randolph County Area Planning if you're going to question that. So, a, and I'm sure Mr. Abel would be happy to come out and, and take a look at your concern, but, um, from other incidences that we've had to navigate, a fence can be built directly on the property line. So obviously that, i- if it's over, that's obviously a problem, but it, it is allowed to be built on the property line. So we should see something positive tomorrow from Rumke. But I, I think it's potentially going to be just as problematic if they don't empty the, the dumpsters more often because they're going to be full just as often.
And then another issue was the water, the drainage issue.
And none of that has been addressed. None of the conversation that Mr. Anderson and I had face-to-face, uh, nothing has changed. They've not planted grass, they've not reworked the area, they've not cleaned up the alleyway, they've not placed any large riprap, they, they've done nothing. Uh, the riprap will not prevent the water from exiting the property. All it's going to do is diffuse the water from leaving the property, so it's not going to be as, as aggressive leaving the, the building. So it, it's going to slow it down. Um, a- and again, you know, I, and I'm not laying blame or making excuses, but, uh, Mr. Anderson's position on that is that area planning approved the plans. So, um, you know, i- in, in my mind, it's, it's something that has to be worked out between the county and the Anderson group, but at the same time, we have the angry neighbors. And so, you know, I, I feel compelled to do something, but until we get it underground, I don't, I don't know how it's going to effectively be managed.
Yeah, we've got one other problem.
I know what that is.
The rebar coming up out of the concrete that has not been fixed.
Well, that's not a big problem because Brad could cut those off in about thirty seconds, but I don't, I'm not ready to go on the personal property.
That is a big problem if somebody falls on and, and it's their head that the three inches of rebar goes into.
I, I don't disagree, but we could remedy that in about thirty seconds, but I just haven't done it yet.
We shouldn't have to.
Right, yeah, it's not our property.
It's not our problem, but, uh, you know, we, Matt, I've been griping about this, Chad, as you know, for a month or more, uh, because the people came and complained, so I went and looked. I've been looking every three or four days to see if they've done it, and they haven't done the damn thing. And enough is enough. I, I really think we need to cite them or we need to do it and then send them a bill.
Well, and, and again, we still have, um, I can't remember what the dollar figure is that we're holding out still, um, but we still have a.
Thirty-two thousand.
Thirty-two thousand?
Probably thirty-two thousand.
Yeah, for thirty-two thousand that he's looking for us to pay for the remaining portion sidewalks. And I, I, am I safe in saying that we are not at that juncture in paying a single dollar yet because he's not satisfied what our requests have been? So, yeah, not even close, unfortunately.
Especially when the, the only real progress on the trash problem's been handled by us.
Yeah, yeah, sadly. Yeah, no kidding. Um, so I will go ahead with council's consensus. I will send a, a follow-up message to, uh, email to Mr. Anderson and let him know what this, uh, status update, and that is status is basically remaining status quo because there's not been any changes as requested. Therefore, we also cannot make any changes with what we've spent.
There's some new erosion and damage in that alley, down the alley from the amount of water.
Yeah, I got a video sent to me by, uh, concerned citizens after the last rain and, yeah.
And, and just so the public knows, I drive through there at least a half a dozen times a week just to see if anything's changing, what's changing. We see exactly what you, the neighbors, are seeing. We're just as frustrated. We're pushing every button that we can possibly push except just doing it ourself and fixing it. And, and we're, that, that's problematic for that guy when we violate people's rights. It's, it's their property and, and they have the right to care for it the way they want. All we can do is try to encourage change, so.
Well, and, and the, the dump, the trash issue then, though, is a citation issue after a while, is it not?
Yeah, I don't believe there's any timeframe or limit on it as long as the police department receives the complaint, which obviously now have.
Right.
And that may be a way to get him into the court.
I mean, I, I. To Steve's point earlier, I mean, we, we, we're trying to toe that fragile line between trying to be civil and work together collaboratively because granted, this is a business owner when it comes down to it, that has helped fund a multi-million dollar project and created places for people to live, but at the same time, there's a level of expectations to, like we said or talked earlier, to adjoining property owners. There's a level of responsibility that.
And I'm not, I'm not sure.
Violation of laws is a nuisance.
I, I'm not sure that the citation goes to the Anderson group because they provided the dumpster, they provided the containment system, and it's Rumke who's violating.
True.
And refusing to use it.
True.
And that, that.
So how does that work though in terms of what would stand up? Is that something we need to research?
If I'm going to issue a violation, it's going to be to the manager of the property.
But if, if Rumke follows through and does, you know, and it follows through with their side of the, what's required in the ordinance, and then there's still a problem, then would.
That's not, I don't care about that.
Yeah. I'm just saying if the gate, if Rumke comes in.
Because it still comes back to the property.
I don't care what Rumke's doing because the, I mean, that's down the line for me. I only care what the property owner or management is doing, and that's who we would cite because they're the one with the most control over the situation.
But, but that being said, if, if Rumke comes in and they put dumpsters in and the gates are shut and they're doing what they're doing and there's still a problem because they're, they're being left open, there's trash being spewed around, then that does, that falls back on the property, like I say, no matter what.
Yeah.
Because Rumke can't control that.
Right. Yeah, I don't care about, I'm not saying I don't care about Rumke.
Yeah. Yeah, I know I probably would.
That's who the property owner is hired to abate that issue, and they're not abating the issue. So it comes back to the property owner.
Okay. Well, again, I will, to wrap this up, I will send a letter or an email to them, and I will copy counsel as I have previously. Then the last thing is the county sign ordinance. Did you have this put on here or did?
Absolutely.
Okay. Then I will turn it over to you.
Uh, we, we need clarification on how the county want, or how the city wants to move with this. Uh, area planning is reaching out to us, wanting our input. They want us to be part of this. The, this is obviously the council's decision. I would be a hundred percent opposed to us moving back to the county. Um, they, they are still taking technology out of this conversation. They have increased the height of a sign, which would make our signs in our, in our community legal for the heights requirement, but they still cannot be electronic or digital. They still can only have one per property. Um, we, we have people with signs in their yards that don't comply with the, the county sign ordinance, uh, that I find completely appropriate for a, a rural farming community. Um, I, I, I think they've made it better from the first time that we've a, addressed this, but from a business economic development position, knowing that we, we've got plans to put a new, uh, high-definition LED digital sign on Vision Corner, we can't do that i- if, if we agree to this. A- and that's just wrong in my mind. When things are done appropriately, they're tasteful, they're, they're effective. I, I think businesses, I think communities should be allowed to, to manage those things together. Now, we can manage all of the things that area planning manages here locally. It's going to be, you know, a little bit troublesome to get started, but it can be done. We did it once before. We consciously gave it to the county. I don't think the county's doing us any justice with some of the things we've had to navigate in the last twenty-four months of all of our, uh, fast and furious development that we've done. I think they've been a little bit of a stick in the mud with some of the processes we needed to navigate. Um, can it get better? Absolutely. But I, I think the sign ordinance, I think you guys voting it down sent a message. I think they aggressively changed some things, but being a hundred percent opposed to modern digital technology, I think is the wrong message to send to a community that's trying to rebrand ourself and, and, and redevelop and grow, we're, we're sending the wrong message. So you guys have to decide and they want to know, so.
I thought we were one hundred percent clear of our position, so.
We, we, we are one hundred percent. We, we rejected it and sent it back to them, but we've never, we've never motioned or done the things that we need to do to start managing our own area planning. So that's what we need to do if that's the direction you guys want to go.
Well, I thought what we, what we voted on was not being included in the sign ordinance. But you're talking about the whole.
That, that is not what the motion was on the floor. That's what the general consensus was, but the motion, and I don't have it in front of me, but the way Jan read the or, the motion that was on the floor, that she went back and listened to it, it was pulling out of Randolph County Area Planning altogether. Now, I don't care what we do, I don't care how we do it, they need to know what we're doing, and we need to be clear and concise with how we're going to move forward. with how we're going to move forward.
Boils down to signage, doesn't it, right now, or not?
Well, I think that's the, the predominant issue, but I think the whole area planning issue is, is there too. I guess the, the, uh, the idealistic side of it says, you know, pull out, take, take over ourselves, everything. The only thing that the practical side says, okay, you need to, you need to have an assessment, you know, be, and that needs to be an informed decision about what the cost implications and the, and the logistic implications are. So do we need to consider what that's going to take? What's the practicality of a plan?
I, I, I think that would be very beneficial for us to identify what the budget's going to be for managing our area planning.
I still, I still-
I mean-
I still think we have the option. They, they still haven't given any proof that there's any reason we'd have the option, that we can't opt out of the sign side of the ordinance and participate in the rest of area planning. I don't think there's any valid argument to that.
You know, te- technically, what Family Dollar and Dollar Tree has done for their grand opening violates the county's sign ordinance.
Right.
And, and there is nothing in my mind that is objectionable to that when you're celebrating the fact that we have a new business opening up in our community. I don't, I don't find that objectionable, and it's for a, a finite period of time. They're not-
Speaking of the temporary banners.
Talking the temporary banners and talking the grand opening banner that's on the side of the building.
Right.
Um, technically, the signage on the building, on the two corners violates the sign ordinance.
Right.
Technically, the two signs that are freestanding violates the sign ordinance.
I will check with Ryan to see if we are, if we do have legal grounds to just opt out of the signage and, and stick with area planning, just so we know that. And then I think it would be prudent to vet out what the cost would be and what the process would look like, or the structure would look like, and its cost benefit ratio. Because, I mean, obviously, there's going to be some benefits to it, having our own say, more fluid, quicker decisions, so forth, more control, but there's going to be an increased cost with that too. So we've got to balance that.
What resources we have, what resources we need.
Yes, yes. Yeah, because I guarantee we already have some things in-house that we have managed.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But then there's probably some things we don't have. So, um, million dollar question in my mind, as I'm sitting here live thinking this out loud, is, is what would be the best entity to help us vet that out, to help us make that determination? And I, I don't know as I sit here at this moment.
The, the, the way I initially was mapping it out in my brain was to look at hiring an engineer, architect, some professional people, uh, basically buy the job or by contract based on, hey, we're going to be looking at thirty area planning concerns that need plan reviews and, and site visits and all those things every year, and what is that going to cost? I think a lot of it, the forming, uh, basically an area planning board to re- review simple things is, is more than adequate. But I think, you know, building homes and foundations and footers and plumbing and all that stuff requires more technical expertise and, and, you know, that, that I think is where we're going to get into the expensive of the process.
Probably not the first city to ever want to do this. I imagine there's another city to borrow some stuff from, do a little research.
And, and effectively, we can just, we can just take Randolph County's area planning ordinances and make them our own. I, I mean, it can be that simple for the first part of the process. We have local people that have already expressed interest and willingness to, to help us do this, and they think we'll be more efficient moving in that pattern. But, you know, the council has to decide that that's what they want to do.
Thoughts, questions, comments?
I'd say go for it. We need to do it. Do we need, do we need, make a, we need to have a vote tonight on that, or?
Is it consensus, but?
Well, I, I, I think, my opinion, for what it's worth, I would urge to pursue a, um, to pursue what the cost structure would be to do this. That's what boils down to. Yeah, assessment of what this entails. So we know exactly what we're looking, or at least, I say exactly, there's, you know, we have a very strong idea of what we're looking at.
So we have an outline of what we're-
Yeah, so that way we can, from an educated standpoint, say, yes, this makes sense. Or you know what? We need to reapproach this because this isn't something we want to do on our own, but yet we definitely know as we sit here that we've not been happy with the signage, even though they have made concessions and are in the right direction. We still don't feel like we're at a point where it's, it behooves us as a community.
Just, just thinking, what is process? What is some, some detail? Are we thinking about like having some kind of an urban planner type individual joining the city administration? Uh, I mean, figuring out what our signage ordinance could be, uh, and then having some kind of process for like, I don't know, permit to put up signs or anything like that? Is that what, is that what we're talking about?
Yeah, the process, absolutely. Uh, we would not be bringing a new head count, um, to the administration, um, at least not under the, like, the, the scenario you drew up in which it would be more of like a by a contract basis as needed, like a PRN.
Yeah, exactly. And, and I, I think that's cost effective. I think, I, I think that no more site visits and plan reviews than what we actually do, given we, we hope we're doing a lot more moving forward in the future. But I, I don't think, I, I don't think we're going to get in over our heads doing it piecemeal at, at the moment.
Somewhat, we've got to leave one person, actually, we have a lot of people watching this. We have, we have one person for sure watching, Dave Keyser, consultants texting me. He's following this conversation very closely. So, um, so, yeah, he certainly can, can, uh, we can form our own planning commission and, and he could provide some assistance with the process. So, um-
I already know that from Ryan. Ryan and I have vetted this out already.
Okay.
It, it's, it's very doable. Um, Ryan cautioned me on it because we're going to incur expenses, but that, you know, and, and I, I wouldn't pull the trigger or suggest we pull the trigger right now. I think we have to build it into a budget. I think we have to step it out and map it out when, when we're going to start.
Right.
And, and, you know, put it all over ducks in a row in order to pull the trigger.
And I'd like to know more about what those expenses would be like.
Right, right.
What it's at.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree, because I, I-
I, I mean, just the simple, the simple things that we had to jump over ju- just for economic development in our community for, you know, a, a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar renovation to a property was just un- unbelievable. A- and it shouldn't have to be that bad. It shouldn't have to be that complicated.
Okay, well, um, we will, we'll make it a goal of our next meeting to have, uh, some, uh, concrete material for you to review in our next meeting. Um, don't expect everything that we need, but, yeah, it's going to be a process. Uh, but we will definitely, uh, start this and, and try to get some clarity.
We do need to tell the county what we're doing with the sign ordinance.
So, a- as in terms of, uh, yea, your name or?
So that's the possibility of just not falling under the authority of the sign ordinance. We can just opt out of that?
The, the way I understand Jan's question, to me, last week, yes, we could just pull out of the sign ordinance. Her concern was that the motion that was actually voted on was pulling out of the whole area planning commission.
So do we need a, a tweak to that? And do we need a, a, a change to that motion?
We need to rescind that, that vote.
And clarify.
Clarify.
I don't know, others, were you, was that your understanding of what we were voting?
Well, I would say my understanding, we were voting to rescind, to, to bow out the sign section.
That's what I was hoping to do.
I've tried to vote, didn't-
The conversation went a little sideways.
That's why I abstained.
And, and Nathan, I think, made the motion, and I think it was a little bit more pointed towards pulling out of the whole area planning. And if it, if it wasn't that, then, a- and-
No, this is-
This is just an explanation for me, but if it wasn't that, I went directly to the city attorney the next day and had a conversation about what we have to do to pull out of area planning. So-
Well.
And Jan felt the same way, that that's what was voted on and passed.
Let's rescind it.
So we can rescind, we, so what if we rescind the, the, uh, what we passed to, for clarification to then, then resubmit as just, as just, uh, removing ourselves from the sign ordinance? I would agree with that. Is that what?
Sounds good.
So that's a form of a motion?
Real intention was, then we can explore-
Well, do I need to do that too?
Do we need to do that too?
Probably.
So let's, let's start out with, uh, uh, rescinding our action on, on, uh, removing Union City, Indiana from Randolph County area planning.
Can we have first, or second?
I'll second.
Jan, or Cindy, roll call vote.
Sorry, I just said first, but the second one there.
Uh, first was Tim, second was Bob.
Okay, Bob, uh, Brandon Lang, Brandon Elmore.
Freddie.
Bob Lahey.
Yes.
Jason Brewer.
Yes.
Tim Heiss.
Yes.
Tito Brares.
Yes.
Okay.
And now a move that we re- remove ourselves, re- remove Union City, Indiana from the, uh, authority of the, uh, signed section of the ordinance of the Randolph County area planning code, just signed section only.
Can we have first, or second?
I'll second again. I hope that's clear enough.
Cindy, roll call vote, please.
Brandon Elmore.
Yes.
Bob Lahey.
Yes.
Jason Brewer.
Yes.
Tim Heiss.
Yes.
Tito Brares.
Yes.
Okay, then just one more question. Do you want me to build this out and put it together as a presentation? Because I think, I think you have to look at permit fees and, and all that stuff for like, what we're going to do or offer for signs. I don't, I, I'm not a big proponent in making somebody pay ten dollars to put a sign up, but I think there needs to be a process. I think we have to start working on building out what that's going to look like, up into even including the whole area planning process. You want us to start working on that? Got it?
We have consensus of that, yeah.
With the signs.
Well, signs and, well.
Well, I, I, I think theoretically that, that process could start with the signs, start to finish, but I think it, it literally becomes almost the same process for a building permit or a shed permit or a fence permit or anything. I think, I think what we can create can be duplicated for everything, including area planning at some point.
Yeah.
All right. Um, visitors wishing to address the board, please stand, state your name, address, and make a move.
I'm Tom Glavine. I'm 406 East Water Street, Union City, Ohio, and I asked a couple of you fellows, and I think I asked the mayor, I said, if I've, I've crossed the border illegally, tell me. He said, I can speak, so, um, I commend you on the efforts you've made to improve our town and community. You've, you've done a great job. And, uh, this morning, my dog took me for a walk and we ended up in the city building, and I was telling the girls some of my thoughts, and they said, you need to, uh, tell the council. And I said, well, you can tell them. No, they said, the ears will be here tonight. I don't know who the ears are, but she said, the ears will be here to listen. And so I would like to, uh, share some, some thoughts. Uh, it's been said that we might be in a bit of a crisis with high prices and high gas, gas and everything. And one of our government officials said one time, uh, don't let a good crisis go to waste. And, um, they have used it to their advantage in many ways, and maybe we could too here. I was thinking, as I mentioned to them, one thing I go to Greenville for is to use a kiosk. You're saying, what's that? I did too, not long ago, but I got one of these phones that you can plug into a machine and get pictures. And that's what a kiosk is. And I used to come to Walgreens and get that accomplished, and then Barbara would always tell me, make sure it's noon, and then go get me something from Bowser's or McDonald's or somewhere for lunch. And, well, Walgreens is gone, so I have to go to Greenville now. So Greenville gets that money and they get my lunch money. And if I'm in a certain store, I spend some money and Union City has lost that money. And I thought, well, that's just one thing. Is it possible we could get a kiosk machine so people could get their pictures developed? Uh, there's probably other things that, uh, people are, would like to have it down. Since it costs you six dollars or better to drive out of town, we can pay a little more to get it here. And, uh, I wondered if it would be wise to somehow ask people or get information on what they would like to, what, why do you go out of town? Why are you going out of town to buy? And what, could you buy it here? And, uh, you know, if we gain sixty, seventy people or seventy families that kept their money in town and helped our merchants, that would be great. And I appreciate the way a lot of the merchants are working together now. I believe the sweet, or I call it sweet shop, it's been that all these years, but the coffee shop, you call it. And Livingston's are sharing a dining room and a lot of them are working together. There's, uh, businesses outside of town. I mentioned Oliver's, and the mayor said they're working with them, maybe, but, uh, maybe the merchants could all work together in the forties. You don't even remember that none of them. But, uh, as I grew up in the forties, uh, we'd come to town and we'd go to one of the merchants and say, we need this or that, and they could provide most of it, and they'd say, wait a minute, we'll call someone's. Well, he'd have it, we'll go down there, he'll share it with you. And of course, all the money stayed in Union City. Two merchants were happy. And, uh, so I'd like to see some of that happen again, if it's possible. I don't know what plan you might want to make to, um, get the people to share, like you could put a questionnaire in a paper or something to get people to share what, what they could buy in Union City that they're not presently buying. One person did mention to me a while back, I don't know what that would involve. They said, I wish they had a senior citizens center or something for us people to go up and, you know, uh, spend some time together. Um, we miss, you know, miss just seeing each other. So that's a thought maybe for the long distance planning, is some kind of a senior citizen place where as I get older, I can go. I'm only eighty, so it doesn't affect me yet, but a lot of people, it does. So that's just what I wanted to share tonight with you, that, uh, let's see if we can keep people buying here and staying here, loving our town. I don't know about entertainment. People go out of town for entertainment, I guess. I don't know what entertainment we might provide. I know you're providing con- I know you're providing concerts and different things to help people, and that's going in the right direction. But, you know, maybe you can think it over and get together. We used to have a, called a heat group out at Shell or doing what it was, where we went in and all got together and sat around for a little while each week, trying to figure ways to improve our job, improve our factory, and try to keep things going. And we had a lot of success. So maybe you need a, shall we call it a think tank, just to kind of come up with ideas that might be workable and doable to make Union City a better, better community even. And as people come in, they're going to appreciate it more. We'll have all they need.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, appreciate that. All right, any other visitors wishing to address? If not, our day of next city council meeting will be Monday, June 27th at 6:00, right here. And the day of the Board of Public Works meeting will be Monday, also, June 27th at 1:00 PM. I would hereby entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
We have a first, second?
Second.
All those in favor, signify by a say and a aye?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.